I will call the public hearing on the subdivision regulations to order. Subdivision regulations is for the update, the current subdivision regulations to the current town subdivision regulations on street design and construction of streets, roads, and bridges. It will be 3.11. Any road which is proposed to become a public street shall be constructed in accordance with the construction standards for streets and roads adopted by the Board of Selectmen on June 5th, 2023. As those standards may be updated and amended from time to time, approval of subdivision plans does not constitute acceptance of a road as a town road, nor does it impose any requirements on the town of Ashland to accept any road regardless of its design or the standard for which it is constructed. Okay? Did you guys get copies of this stuff?
Well, I printed it out. Was it on your website?
Yeah, some of it. It's not, it doesn't officially go on the website until after this meeting.
I'm not sure if I got it up there yet. There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Mike.
Will you do that? When you're done with the folders, I'll take the folders back.
Oh, yeah. I will take them home, sorry. Jane put me up there.
You folder thing, you.
Don't look in here.
All right. Is there any discussion on, on the subdivision change? Do you guys have any comments on the subdivision change? All right, I'll leave this open for now, at which time I will open the public hearing on Article 4, Special Provisions of the Ashland Planning Board Proposed Zoning Ordinance Change for 2025. This is the second public hearing. Is there any discussion on any of the proposed changes? The current one that you have here reflects the changes that we made in the last one, which were really grammatical. It was one sentence that was repeated that we took out.
That's it.
What would be, any other changes?
Yeah, it was a spelling error. They're all minor.
So no content changes?
No content changes, no.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Angel, the two things that we have opened public hearings on currently are the subdivision regulation changes in which we are updating our subdivision regulations to the current town code for roads. And then the second one is the Ashland Planning Board Proposed Zoning Ordinance Changes for 2025 under Article 4, Special Provisions. So the changes are on 4.1, waterfront access. It is the underlined back lots referred to undeveloped land behind a developed property. In 4.1A, it is the minimum depth of any waterfront access shall be one-half of the frontage.
4.1.
4.1C, sorry. The parking area shall not be closer than 100 feet to the reference line. The reference line is the edge of the water body at its full volume, from which setbacks, such as the limits of the protected shoreline, are determined. 4.1D, we struck out the word "one," we added "to," "chemical," "mechanical," or "flush." Struck out the word "facility," changed it to "facilities." 4.31, 4.3.1, Proposed Intent, in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 674:71-73, the purpose of this ordinance is to expand the mix of the affordable housing opportunities in town by permitting the creation of secondary dwelling residence as an accessory use to existing single-family detached dwellings while maintaining the visual and functional characteristics of single-family residence neighborhoods for the following reasons. 4.31A, there is a growing need for more diversable, affordable housing opportunities for citizens of New Hampshire. 4.3.1B, demographic trends are producing more households where adult children wish to give care to support to parents in a semi-independent living arrangement. 4.3.1C, elderly and disabled citizens are in need of independent living space for caregivers. 4.1.1D, 4.3.1D, there are many important sociological benefits associated with the creation of accessory dwelling residence. About halfway through it, we add "or accessory buildings," so the whole sentence would read, in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 674:71-73, this provision allows for the creation of accessory dwelling units, ADU's, as a subordinate residential living unit that is contained within an attached or a single-family detached dwelling. We've added "or accessory buildings." And then it goes on to say, "on the same parcel of land as the principal dwelling unit is accommodies."
Accommodies.
Yeah. And that provisions of independent living facilities for one or more persons. We added, but not more than two adults per ADU. And that was, that's all we've added. Going down, we added the following sentence, "ADUs units shall be listed with the town and the owner shall be notified to town if they are no longer using this as a permitted legal residence or if the owner does not occupy either unit. Recertification each year shall be held and inspected by the building office and the fire department."
Can I ask a question about?
Yes, ma'am.
Just occurred to me in looking at this, if they are no longer using this as a permanent legal residence or if the owner does not occupy either unit, does that phrase, "the owner does not occupy," leave us open to the idea that someone might say, "Well, I'm occupying it part-time. I don't live there the whole time." Does that open that possibility, which is what we were trying to shut down?
I do not believe so. And I say that because when the attorney reviewed it, she didn't bring that up.
Okay.
And I do know that was one of the things that the building inspector and fire chief were concerned about, so I know it was brought to her attention.
Okay, great. No, I just wanted to make sure, because we really worked to figure out how to close that loophole.
Okay, thank you.
4.3.3, Minimum Lot Requirements. Actually, in that part, there's a, but 4.3.3A, that changes, we added to the end of it, and no other accessory dwellings. So it reads, only one, parentheses, "one," ADU, shall be permitted on the lot that has an existing single-family dwelling and no other accessory dwellings. 4.3.3B, this is an added section, there shall be no additional requirements for a lot size, footage, space limitation, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single-family dwelling without an accessory dwelling unit. That brings us to 4.3.3E. The construction of the ADU shall not increase the nonconformity aspect of any existing nonconforming lot. 4.3.3F, construction of the ADU shall meet all building codes, life safety codes, guidance. The architecture and design of the ADU shall reflect that of the primary residence.
You want people to take turns reading, so you don't have to do it all?
Fine with me if you'd like to read.
I'm happy to, I just didn't want you getting stuck doing the whole thing.
Feel free.
Okay. 4.3.3G, ADU shall not be allowed on lots with multiple single-family dwellings attached to each other, such as townhouses, or on lots with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674:31. Jumping down to 4.3.4, Dimension Requirements, the ADU shall not be less than 750 square feet and shall not exceed 1,000 square feet inhabitable floor area. 4.3.5, Permitting, ADU shall be approved by either conditional use permit pursuant to RSA 674:21 or by special exception in all zoning districts that permits single-family dwellings. The applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit shall make adequate provisions for water supply and sewage disposal for the accessory dwelling unit in accordance with RSA 485-A:38, but separate systems shall not be required for the principal and accessory dwelling units. In order to comply with this paragraph and prior to constructing an accessory dwelling unit, an application for approval for a sewage disposal system shall be submitted in accordance with RSA 485-A as applicable. The approved sewage disposal system shall be installed if the existing system has not received construction approval and approval to operate under current rules or predecessor rules, or the system fails or otherwise needs to be repaired or replaced. Under Requirements, 4.3.7A, the ADU shall have no more than two bedrooms, nor shall it be occupied by more than two adults per ADU. 4.3.7C, we added that the square footage of the shared hallway is included in the 1,000 square footage maximum size. Glad to pass to someone else.
I can go. 4.3.7E, any exterior stairway leading to the ADU shall be covered or enclosed. 4.3.7F, the ADU must meet state requirements for life safety codes and carbon monoxide detectors. 4.4, this section is mobile homes, it was existing language, we added, "mobile homes intended for use by one family shall be considered single-family residences." 4.4B, same section, existing language says, "mobile homes placed or replaced within the Pemiduas Overlay District." New language says, "or in a designated floodplain." Back to existing, must be installed upon a permanent foundation. 4.5, Mobile Home Parks, mobile home parks are not allowed in the industrial-commercial or commercial zone. 4.5C, language was added, this is the boundaries of these individual sites, referring to sites within the mobile home park shall be clearly marked.
Then we struck out the.
Yeah, struck, there's struck out, "commercial zone," and "sewered portions," along with "unsewered portions of the industrial-commercial zone." That's all been struck. 4.5F, this is within mobile, within the minimum 10 acres of a mobile home park, language was struck, this says, "but in addition to requirements stated in 4.4C and 4.5G." Someone else can go. 4.6C.
4.6C, additional language must comply with the flood hazard overlay district, Article 2.2G. 4.7, Home Occupation, new word added entirely, so "home occupation" is any use that is customarily conducted entirely within a dwelling, dot-dot-dot. And that additional language at the end of that section, there is no outward appearance of such an occupation with the exception of one permitted sign. 4.7A2, an additional permitted, so no signage other than a permitted sign. 4.7A3, a new sentence at the end of that stating, "there shall be no exterior storage of equipment," in parentheses, "including the parking of commercial vehicles." Moving on to 4.8, Bed and Breakfasts, new sentence that states, "at the beginning, bed and breakfasts are allowed in dills residential or rural residential zones subject to site plan approval." Struck out, "bed and breakfasts are allowed in all zones subject to site plan review in the following conditions." New language, 4.8.1, Purpose, the purpose of this section is to preserve the existing housing stock and neighborhood character while providing efficient use of larger homes and providing flexibility to respond to changing households, sizes, and needs. 4.8.2, Definitions, bed and breakfast means a transient lodging facility that is a single dwelling residence occupied by the owner at the time of rental to a patron. The facility is regularly used and kept open as such in a bona fide manner for the feeding and lodging of transient guests. It shall have a dining area capable of accommodating the number of registered guests, whose posted room rates shall include breakfast only. As this is considered a rental unit, the property owner must comply with the State of New Hampshire RSA 153:10-A, as amended relative to compliance with the NFPA Life Safety Code and the Standard for Installation of Carbon Monoxide (CO) Detection and Warning Equipment. 4.8.4, Requirements, a bed and breakfast shall be subject to the following requirements. 4.8.4A, in parentheses, 3, exterior alterations other than the signage seen below should be in keeping with the character of the structure. Struck out, the establishment is not primarily a restaurant, although the establishment may serve breakfast and snacks to its guests.
Anybody else?
I'll take over. 4.8.5, Signage, 4.8.5A, we added a phrase, "for each bed and breakfast," at the beginning, "the main signage shall be larger than eight square feet and may be double-sided, postside included." The sections after, I think, were renumbered there.
Correct.
4.8.6B, guest spaces shall be set back a minimum of 20 feet from any property line located to the side and rear of the building, and shall be screened from adjacent properties by six-foot-high wood or mason roof fence, or by sighted green vegetation of the same height. Under Lighting, 4.8.7B, no areas shall be floodlit. 4.8.7C, all outdoor lighting shall be in compliance with the requirements of Site Plan Regulation. 4.8.7D, the total cutoff of all light shall occur within the property lines of the parcel to be developed. 4.9, Large Garage Barn Sales and Auctions. What did we, did we add anything?
No.
No, we didn't add any. See, anything under there?
No, there isn't. We didn't change that at all.
No, we didn't change that. And then the last thing, there's just a note that Article 4.10, which is the floodplain section, is being moved in its entirety and renumbered. It will become Article 2.2G under Article 2 Zones and Regulations. It's moving the entire article.
Correct. Any questions, concerns?
I just saw one, like, little typo, 4.3.7F. There's a gap in the carbon monoxide detectors, there's just like a typo of an extra gap at the end.
Okay.
What number is it?
4.3.7F.
Okay. Just an extra space.
Yeah. All right. Any comments from the public?
What happens when they go to sell the property?
They can re, you're speaking.
The ADUs.
On the ADUs, just for clarification, ADUs. They does not have to be removed, if they decide to run, need the ADU, they can reregister it with the town, or they can just keep it as a single-family house.
So if you have a separate kitchen in a barn, for instance, and you sell the house.
They have servants quarters.
Perfect. In fact, I don't have servants. But if you did that, and then you sold it, that person that bought it would then have to apply to allow another adult to live in that secondary.
If they so want to, yes.
Or they just don't use it or don't tell you?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they need to tell us if someone is living, living there or not.
Right.
And the reason for that is, is state law with inspections.
What about like adult children that refuse to leave? Like, it seems to be a trend. Do they count as a person living in the.
They do. Yep. They can. They may. Yep. It will come down to whether they pay rent or not.
Is that really the.
Seriously, that is in state law.
That's the criteria.
That's in state law.
Is it not just a family member, like an in-law apartment, it's a separate rental unit?
Correct. Yep. Ms. Angel, did you have anything? Okay. All right. Marty?
Yes, I have a concern. And I think it was mentioned before. Why are these not up on the town website yet?
Because we were informed that until all final changes have been made, it does not need to go up and probably should not go up until all final changes of the second hearing is done.
But it could have been labeled as draft.
Could have been.
Yes, and it should have been. It should, I think. Personal opinion, it should have been on the website so that people, so that the residents of the town knew what the proposed changes were, so if they had questions, they could come to the meeting instead of just seeing the statement, "public hearing for changes."
I hear you, and I understand.
And the ad also said that the changes would be on the town board webpage and available in the town office.
They are available at town office. They will be up on the webpage tomorrow. The Land Use Secretary only has so many hours, and we had to prioritize that due to some other issues that are legally taking more precedence.
But we've had, what, almost a month to get this up?
After the last meeting, KB and I tried to meet, but he was sick. So as soon as he had the last draft, which was the January 7th hearing, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're doing the best we can right now.
I've not been able to meet until this week. I understand. I didn't have anybody email me, and the town office said nobody showed up looking for a copy. So, and when I checked the municipal requirements, we do have until February to actually have the final version posted.
No, I'm not.
It is now done, and will be in the morning.
I'm not disputing that.
Yep.
But I think for transparency, they should have been up on the website.
I totally agree.
We all agree with you, we just simply ran out of time between people being sick and a lawsuit that we're dealing with.
Yeah, I know.
I have one small change.
Yes, sir.
Jane.
Yes.
4.3.2.
4.3.2.
Second paragraph.
Yes.
Second sentence.
Yeah.
You can actually strike units there and just put ADUs, because it's actually, it's a double.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
If you have a mobile home, and it does not have a cement slab under it, because I'll do it if they were going a long time ago, and they go to sell it, can they sell it without the cement slab?
That will literally depend upon their financing. So, because I deal with that, it will 100% depend upon their financing, whether it has to have a cement pad, whether it can be on post and piers.
Oh, okay.
And if it has to be tied down.
So whoever they borrow their money.
Whoever they borrow their money from.
Okay.
Most lenders today are requiring it to be tied, at least tied down.
In some associations.
In some associations, I have gone to that, too.
I just thought.
Yep, but you're right. Many that were older mobile homes have none of that.
With the recent floodplain changes, the new flood map they just did, like, our house didn't used to be in the flood zone, now we are.
Yep.
But has that affected any of the mobile home parks?
We currently only have one mobile home park, and I don't believe it has.
We're not in flood.
Not in floodplain, though.
Okay.
So, and that's off of 132, it's.
Yeah, I know.
It would be quite the foot if that was.
Well, yeah.
We're all in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay, at the time being, 6:26, I will end the public hearings on the two articles, and they will go to the voters at town meeting.
The change in the subdivision rates, that's what it is.
Right, I'm sorry, you're correct.
That gets approved by us.
This will go to, the planning regulations will go to the voters.
Yeah.
The subdivision regulations, we will deal in that meeting with.
Do you want the subdivision regulations available to town office and on the town website?
They will be added to the subdivision regulations in the.
Updated.
Do you want it posted before, okay, so.
In a few minutes.
So after your approval.
As of tonight, they will be. All right. So feel free to take a bathroom break for three minutes.
Come on.
For January 23rd to order. Bethany will not be present due to illness. She's the only one I heard of, and I believe all others are present.
Yeah.
I'm missing, yeah, everyone else is present, so we're good. Okay. I do not have a presentation, minutes for January 2nd. I know that they just kind of went out. The, also, the secretary is down with the flu as well, so she will not be here. And we've asked Paula to fill in for her, which she graciously accepted, and we thank you, Paula. Okay?
I don't think I got the minutes in the package, too.
Okay.
Again, it was a problem with the printer downstairs.
So if everyone's okay with it, I would table the minutes till, of January 2nd to our next meeting.
Do we have minutes for January 7th meeting?
7th?
Yes, that was our first public hearing. Our new secretary was at that meeting, we should have minutes for that meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
I can mention.
We're gonna have to table that one as well.
Okay.
Yep.
So public hearings, what about we have minutes as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was she at that meeting?
Yes, she was.
Yes, she was. Yep. That was actually her first meeting for us. Maybe the second. Okay, next on the agenda, first, I need to say that, as it does stay in our regulations and as we have sold every applicant, that once they give us an application, we will have the opportunity to discuss that application at any and all meetings that we have without further posting to the applicant. And if there was a special meeting, then we would have to post it to the applicant. We have heard from Mill Pond as of this afternoon. They are requesting an extension on their applications from now to March 6th, due to they are unable to get everything together that they need to get together for us and for the Board of Selectmen. So we do not need to make a ruling on that at this time unless you so want to do that.
Just a question, which is, when they submitted their application, it set a clock in motion. If they are requesting this extension, how does that affect the deadlines we're under?
It gives them more time.
It gives them more time.
It is.
So it moves the whole deadline, including what we have to do?
It is up to us to extend it. We have extended it to February 6th at this point. We do not have to make a decision on this until February 6th. If we want to make that decision tonight, we can. We have spoken to the attorney, because we were speaking to our. We have spoken to the attorney, because we were speaking to her about a variety of things, and she is recommending that we do give them an extension to March 6th.
I will make a motion to grant that extension.
Okay.
To the March 6th.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second and a motion to extend the Mill Pond application so they can get stuff together for a meeting on March 6th. They still need, will need to notify us with all their stuff within two weeks prior.
Right.
Okay. Do I have any discussion on that?
Just again, question, and that moves all of our deadlines back?
Yes, maybe.
Okay.
Yep. Do I have any other discussion? Hearing none. Do I, all those in favor say aye?
Mm-hmm.
Aye. And those opposed? Those abstaining?
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
You can get the stair down.
Motion passes unanimously then. All right. Site plan application for Holdenus at Country Place.
Cottage Place.
Cottage Place, sorry. If you look in here, you will see a nice little package here. We have been in contact with them and talked with them. Jane, could you like to tell us your findings?
I didn't actually, uh, it was the town office in Holdenus that called me about the application. I know at the last meeting, we talked about reaching out to, I think his name's Andrew, I think it is.
Yep.
And I had not had an opportunity yet, because I wasn't sure if, with this so little of this property in Ashland, if we are going to default to Holdenus doing the site plan review rather than us.
So, so what I have done is, I took their application, I looked everything over, and then I went to look to see where they're doing and what is actually owned in the town of Ashland. 0.07 of an acre of this property is in the town of Ashland. There is one and a half buildings on this property that is in the town of Ashland, none of which is actually involved in this event. The event is entirely in the town of Holdenus. All of their contacts and everything go through the town of Holdenus. There's no reason for them to go through the town of Ashland other than 0.07 of an acre of their property is in the town of Ashland. And the only way to access that property is to go into Holdenus to come back through, to come into Ashland. So it would be my recommendation to allow the Holdenus Planning Board to continue on, shall we say.
Recommend that Holdenus?
Yep, just a second.
Holdenus Planning Board doing the application.
Do, um, do I have any comments from the board first?
I'll be with you.
Okay. Ms. Angel, you had a comment?
Yeah.
It's for a yearly, a bi-yearly event. They do it twice a year.
Can you make a request of the Holdenus Planning Board to have them notify their people not to park in driveways along the way? Because I've had difficulties with communicating with both the Holdenus Police Department and the Ashland Police Department about their visitors parking in my driveway and blocking my access to Route 3.
We can definitely make that part of this.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yep. Anybody have any other? Dawn?
I'm familiar with the parking there, and the one and a half buildings that are there. It's a no bedder cottage and a one bedroom cottage that rent out.
At best, yeah. Martine, you ever gonna say something?
It brings to mind, there is the issue of regional impact, which is a process through, like, Regional Planning Commission. And it's also in the RSAs, that if there is a regional impact, and this, we could consider the parking issues as a regional impact. It may be something that they should be, that Holdenus should be looking at.
We will, I can bring that up to Holdenus.
Because I agree, parking does become an issue.
Yeah, parking does, yeah.
And if, and it would be Holdenus that would initiate the determination of regional impact.
Okay. So agreed.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion on this?
I have to step outside first.
We're going to motion to say that Holdenus will take over.
And that we will, that these, uh, site plan does not involve us, it involves Holdenus. However, we are concerned about parking and stressing that parking must include access for our residents to get in and out of their own properties. And that they may want to consider a regional impact.
Determination of regional impact.
Right.
Sounds like you just made a motion.
That's the motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
I'm just gonna wait for Paula. You got that, Paula?
I've got parking access.
And that we will stress to Holdenus that they will make allowances for our residents to get in and out of their driveways. And for them to consider regional impact. And Chris seconded it.
Got that, too.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask you a quick question about Cottage Place?
You certainly may.
So there's also, my understanding is that they're also trying to change the zoning in that area of Route 3, so that they can become commercial instead of rural residential. There's some development plans going on somewhere down there, where the town of Ashland owns such a small part of that. Does that still allow you the rights as-
We, our rights start at the Ashland Town Line, proceed through to the Ashland Town Lines. Anything within that border, they have to follow our rules.
Okay, so if they're looking to re-zone, you sort of, you know-
If they're looking to re-zone all of Route 3,
Yeah.
they can only zone it through to the Holdenus Town Line.
So Holdenus says yes, and Ashland says no, then that one and a half buildings is in question?
No, it's not in question at all. Half that building will be whatever, and the other half will be whatever.
Okay, so they couldn't develop that in terms of a commercial entity?
Not at this time, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Just backing up. I think what, in looking at this again, I think that regional impact determination is very important, because their list of proposed events is not just the vintage market twice a year. There's a long list of other possible events. So that parking definitely becomes a major issue.
Yes. All right. Next would be Six Mill Street Skate Park. Um, I believe Martine sent a email to us. Do we have that?
Yeah, I did send that.
Okay.
Basically, what I said is that, according to our Site Plan Review Regulations, anytime there is a change in, with any commercial properties, if there's a change in owner, or if there is a change in lease or rental occupant, it does come to us for Site Plan Review.
Just like with the coffee roaster.
Absolutely. And that property, I think there have been major concerns about that property over the last several years, for various reasons. And, so according to our regulations, they need to come to us. And I, and my recommendation was that they should at least come first to talk to us. It may be a modification of a-
Existing.
Of existing. But when we've got a new rental occupant in there, there are life safety code issues in that building, you know, not-
There are?
I'm sure there are. And I think it needs to be reviewed.
All right. So Jane, we'll send a letter to them requesting them to come to our next meeting to discuss what they're doing.
Do you need the tenant and the owner, or just the owner?
Technically, the owner. But if he wants to designate the tenant to speak for him, he can.
As an agent?
As an agent.
What property is this again?
This is, uh, Mill Street, the old LW Packard Mill. This is the section that was the White Mountain Skate, uh, White Mountain Jiu-Jitsu, which is now White Mountain Skate Park.
Where'd they go, Jiu-Jitsu?
They are now at the-
Old liquor store.
Yeah, the old liquor store.
Oh, the one that went in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I thought that was somebody different.
And they came before us as well. We might, at the same time, um, send a letter to, because it's the same owner, I believe. It would be Mr. Wayne.
Mr. Wayne's the owner.
At the same time, we'll send, should probably send him a letter saying that this is not for habitation, and there shall be nobody living at said property.
Is there evidence that there is? I haven't heard.
There is evidence there may have been.
How visible is that from the fire station?
Yeah. Okay. Next on the list is you have a notice here from the town of Andover. Andover is doing a regional impact, okay? They are having a public hearing on Tuesday, January 28th, 8:00 PM, in the town of Andover, excuse me. And this is in regard to, I believe, a cellphone tower. So if there's anyone from the board that would like to attend, please do.
Where would this cellphone tower go?
In Andover.
Oh, okay, in Andover.
Is any part of Andover contiguous with-
No, not even close.
They send these to everybody. I got one. I got one in Meredith's.
I believe they send it to everyone in the state in Hampshire. I have no idea why.
Far broader than anything we've ever done.
They're very, yeah.
And they've been doing it for a while, like, it's been going on for a year.
Yeah, this is, this is not the first one we've received.
Okay, just trying to figure out why they sent it to us.
Okay. I believe that brings us to all of our new business, old business. Um, you have a, had requested a, um, a revocable standby letter of credit for Granite Ridge Development. This is a copy of it here, okay?
Two copies here. If someone needs one?
Okay. Last month, I reported to you that Mr. Hiltz had gone and done his thing for alteration of terrain to bring the terrain back. Here's the letter from them saying that that was there. If we had any comments on it, we had to-
On West Street.
Yeah, on West Street. We had to reply by the 6th of January.
Yep.
And I checked on the DES One Stop website today, and they have not made, they have just, just accepted the request, the application. They haven't ruled anything yet. Yeah.
Okay, so what does that mean?
So we would have to look at the, is the copy of the application at the town office with you?
There is a copy of it.
You had it?
Is it in the file?
Yeah.
Okay. If we wanted to look at it, okay.
And then the state would follow up on that to make sure he complies?
Generally, the process is, for a certain length of time, they're open to comments. Then they review the application, and typically, they will come back with changes that need to be made. And then it goes back to them for approval of the changes. And then they finally approve and grant the permit. It's a long process.
My understanding from Mr. Hess is that it has already been granted, and that we had up until January 6th to make comments.
No, only, and again, I checked the website today.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
Yeah. This is, they have accepted the application. They have not approved it.
Okay.
Okay. So they've accepted it as, it's the equivalent of accepting it as complete?
Well, no, it's been submitted.
It's been submitted.
They've given it a filing number.
It definitely has been submitted.
Okay.
That's about it.
That leads us to Mill Pond Development. Their applications, we have voted to extend that, unless anyone has anything else to say about them. I, it is my understanding that a letter has been sent to them from the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. We're waiting to hear back on that. But one of their concerns was about the industrial, industrial drive. And it is my understanding that they will not have an answer on that until March 11th, because it is going before the voters at town meeting to accept industrial drive as a town road.
What does that mean? I've read it, and I don't, I'm trying to understand the impact of that. So it talks about they'll then give back the park and recreation areas.
The easement will essentially go away.
Terminate.
Yep, for all future development.
So they will now own?
No, no. The town of Ashland will own a portion of the road from, from-
Main Street.
Main Street to about halfway down the skate rink. So their easement would only be from halfway down the skate rink to their property.
So industrial drive will go down by the skate rink and return?
Yep.
And this is only if, in fact, the Mill Pond project were to be-
No, no.
This is no matter what?
This is no, the, the warrant article goes to the voters to accept that as a town road. And that will, would, because you can't have two town roads coming out at the same place. That would move the easement over to industrial drive, is my understanding. So that they will no longer have that problem of that ever becoming a road out of the ballpark.
It's like a swamp.
Yeah.
No, I know. I've walked it. I guess my question is, and probably the voters have wondered this, too. If voting for that, and we're still, you've pushed back all the stuff with Mill Pond Project, if we say, yeah, we do want that, is that going to make it easier for Mill Pond Project? Or does it-
It doesn't, it doesn't-
It won't impact that decision at all?
It doesn't impact that decision at all.
Now, if the voters vote for that to go through, that easement essentially saves the park. And we don't have to get rid of the pagoda or the pavilion that's there in the ice rink. If they vote against it and they say no, then Mill Pond could take that. They already have rights to, because they have the easement there. Whether or not their project moves forward or not, the property owner could take it. So this is all for the town to save that piece of the park.
So they actually have the full easement now?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they do.
Yep.
And technically, like Chris just said-
Is it bargaining chip for them? Is this something that-
No.
But I think this is an important question, that voters may have real, also real questions. And if, if this, in fact, is giving back that part of the ballpark, how do we make sure that, will it be in the town meeting that this gets talked about, so that people do understand? Because I think the concern could very well be-
By, by the town accepting this, it will preserve what is currently the ballpark, with the possible one exception of about 50 feet.
Yeah.
Let me answer your question. It's a warrant, so it could be discussed in deliberative.
Yeah, it's going to be discussed that way.
That's really important. Otherwise, people might think, well, if we vote for this, does it make it easier for Mill Pond?
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to know.
Yeah, and so I think we want to-
It does not, it does not make it easier or harder for Mill Pond or any other developer.
So we just need to make sure voters really understand that.
So if you own the road, and they have that small easement there,
That it benefits the town.
If they then don't develop that, they sell the land to someone else, that land, that easement transfers with the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, the easement goes with the property as it has for 120 years.
So the easement would change while Mill Pond still owns that easement in-
Mill Pond does not own it. Mill Pond does not own it currently.
Who owns the easement now?
Some guy in California.
Well, it's a company called Mill Pond Associates.
Right, Mill Pond Associates.
With multiple, multiple owners.
But that is not the same Mill Pond that's doing the development.
Right.
Totally different companies.
Oh, it's a partnership that owns it, right, the property now. They haven't conveyed it to the developers.
And they've, they've owned it for 20 or more years.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't they convey it to the town of Ashland?
Convey what, the property?
Yeah.
Because the town's not willing to buy it.
Oh, the easement? Oh, because it's valuable to that piece of property.
Right.
It's their only access to that piece of property.
From Main Street. Because right now, Freudenberg is private. Because right now, Freudenberg is private, and so they can't use that. So that's why we need it.
And the deed to Freudenberg says something, and I'm paraphrasing, this is a private road until such time as the town of Ashland votes to accept it as a, as a town road.
So we would be accepting it as a town road?
Industrial drive.
Industrial drive.
Yep.
It would then be a town road?
Then be a town road.
Other than that smaller easement that you're referring to that's going into the woods.
Correct. Yep.
Is that all cleared through legal?
Yes.
County? Some of the wording is just a little strange, but okay.
All right. Does anyone have anything else?
I don't.
Nope.
Our next meeting will be February 6th.
Here.
Here. Next meeting will be here, will be February 6th. We will have a application before us from Efar, which is basically a lot line adjustment that everyone is happy about.
Application from Efar, E-H-F-A-R.
Who was it, Ken?
The, Barry Gah. It's an application, it's basically a lot line adjustment.
One that we canceled?
It's the same one that came before us.
Yeah, it got withdrawn last, in June.
It got withdrawn last year because some of the parties were traveling and were away. So now they're all back, and everybody's good, and we can bring it forward, and...
This is an easy one.
It's a very, very simple one.
I have a question on that. So, one of the offenders evidently got divorced. So part of the problem the last time was that he didn't get the notice that the ex-wife got. However, when I checked the registry, it's still, the deed is still registered, and both their names with the same address. So I don't know, I mean, last time he showed up and he was upset, and that's why they canceled it. But I can only go by the tax maps and the deeds.
Yeah, if we don't know what his address is, we can't send anything to him, because we don't know his address.
So do I send two notices? I mean, it's under both their names still, so I don't, because they're trustees of trust.
Well, if they're both trustees.
I guess I could do one to him, but one to her.
Do you even have an address for the other person? For the...
It's on the property tax map, there's an address, yes. It's the same as the one that's in the deed.
You don't have the other trustee's address, though?
It's both the same, it was the husband and the wife.
No, he didn't tell you, like, hey, I moved, here's my new address, you don't have that.
No, no, I think it was just, she didn't give it to me, and I didn't know anything about it. Well, that's not our problem.
If you don't, if you're not given the address, there's not much you can do.
But I guess what I could do, knowing there might be any issues, I could send one to him and one to her, as opposed to...
If you know, if you know the address.
So that way, if she doesn't, then it's his mail.
And it could make, hopefully, maybe shift forward.
All right, I'll try that.
Maybe.
Thank you. Interesting challenges.
Yep, okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
No, but you wanted me to mention the webinar.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, has anybody looked at those webinars that he had sent out?
The ones on Thursday?
Yeah, like the PFA days and all that. I listened to the one, and then what I found very interesting is that they have now put up all of last year's. So, I mean, for me especially, I need a lot of training. And I'm finding it extremely interesting that I can actually go in there and follow up from last year, and then...
Yeah, yeah, I have the page.
And they're coming on monthly, and they're actually provide, so you've all seen it then? So, all right, so you all know what they...
So, I encourage you all to watch them, they're great. Also, on February 6th, if we can, we will have an update on where we stand with the charrettes and getting ready to move forward for the upcoming year. Having said that, if no one has anything else, then at 6:58, I end the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.